Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 4 meeting. I do believe we have a closed session to announce. Ms. Noonan? And I'd like to take roll call as well.
Councilmember Engler.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Newman.
Here.
Mayor Adam.
Here.
And Councilmember McNamee is absent.
Now, Ms. Noonan.
All right, thank you, Mayor Adam. We do have four closed sessions tonight, all of them pending litigation. First one is California Department of Housing and Community Development versus Shangri-La. Second one is F. Roberts Construction versus Shangri-La. Third one is Consolidated Electric versus Keo Electric Corporation. And the fourth one is Bonnie Bean versus Gerardo Rodriguez pursuant to Gemenco Section 54956.9A.
All right, thank you very much. We'll see you in 60 minutes.
111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 155 157 159 161 163 165 167 169 171 173 175 177 179 181 183 185 187 189 191 193 195 197 199 201 203 205 207 209 211 213 215 217 219 221 223 225 227 229 231 233 235 237 239 241 243 245 249 251 259 261 263 265 267 269 271 273 279 282 289 292 299 302 305 308 310 313 316 318 320 324 328 331 333 337 340 342 344 347 350 352 354 356 359 362 366 369 372 375 381 389 391 399 401 409 411 419 421 429 431 440 442 444 447 450 452 454 457 460 462 464 467 470 476 478 480 482.00 484 487 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 4, Thousand Oaks City Council meeting. And we did have a closed session tonight. Ms. Noonan, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
All right. Would you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We are going to change the agenda up just a little bit this evening. We're going to hear the Community Social Service Grant Recommendations first this evening. And I'm going to go down to the podium because we have some very special presentations to make this evening. Okay. First off, I'd like to invite Elaine Hagen down to join me. Elaine's with the Cuneo Open Space Foundation. And each year, the Cuneo Open Space Foundation holds a Trails Education Day, correct? And it teaches environmental education. It's also sponsored by Cuneo Valley Unified School District with 4th graders. And COSCA is involved as well. And I understand you have hikes that you take, workshops where the kids learn about animals, park rangers, careers, how to be safe and courteous on the trails. That's important, absolutely. You had 1,050 kids attended this year. That's incredible. And the students are invited to enter a letter-writing contest with two winners from each school and five grand prize winners district-wide. So I'd like you to tell us a little bit about that and announce the winners.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we're fortunate to have three of our five grand prize winners with us tonight. They competed in this writing contest. There were 750 letters we received. And it's pretty cool to be the five youth or these letters were the five best from the whole district. Pretty wonderful. Anyway, the writing contest serves a couple of purposes. First of all, it gives us an idea of what the students learn and what they take away from the program. And a very important thing is that they write letters to volunteers or park rangers or other volunteers that they met during the day. And the rangers and the volunteers love their letters. Some of them get stacks of letters this thick, which is pretty cool. So, anyway, it's my pleasure to work with this program. It started in 1992. So now we have people whose parents have attended, believe it or not. And it's actually sponsored by COSCA, managed by COSAF and COSTA, the Cuneo Open Space Foundation and the Cuneo Open Space Action Committee. So it couldn't happen without volunteers, which are wonderful. And that's partly why it's so great to have all these letters. So we have three of the five winners here with us tonight. The first is June Crowe. Can you stand, June? From Banyon Elementary. And her teacher is Brian Tash. And the second is Nicole Fecchi from Sycamore Canyon Elementary School. And her teacher is Lori Barron. And the third winner that we are honored to have with us tonight is Emerson Coother from Westlake Hills Elementary. And her teacher is Melissa Sublett. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. And I appreciate the support that we receive from the city. And sometimes even some of the city council members who might be involved with COSCA come to the event, which is wonderful.
Mayor, we have a hand up in the audience. Would you like to be a teacher and call on the person?
Oh, okay. Oh, is this Carolyn? Oh, I'm so sorry. We didn't see you. Oh, please come down. Somehow, we didn't see you come in. This is Carolyn Wei from Lang Ranch Elementary. And her teacher is Kim Carroll. Carolyn? Carolyn? You might want to come back down here. It's good. Thank you, Mayor Adam.
You're welcome. Yeah, why don't we have all the recipients and their parents? If you'd like, just come on down. We'll get a picture with the council. Fantastic. Future writers of America. Thank you. Next up, I'd like to invite Luis Andrade and Ty Gutierrez to come down and join me here at the podium.
Hi, how are you?
So Luis and Ty are from the Diversity Collective here in Ventura County. And I'm really glad you're here tonight because it gives me an opportunity to talk just briefly about our council and the policies that we have, we have adopted. And they guide us in how we run our government. And we voted unanimously. So I mean, there's 10 different policies, but the very first policy, to me, is the most important. I just want to read just a little bit of it. That this council and this city government will create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government. And I suspect your group, Diversity Collective, is on the same mission as we are. So I'm very happy about that. And I do want to recognize June 24 is LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And I want to apply the strength and the resiliency that you have in advocating for freedom and equality for LGBTQ+ folks. We are dedicated as well to upholding the rights and dignity of all people. We thank you for the work you do. And would you like to take just a minute and tell us about some of your endeavors?
Of course.
Great.
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I am Connie Ty Gutierrez. It's an honor to be representing Diversity Collective as part of their board. Thank you, Mayor Adam, and city council members for your support. On behalf of Diversity Collective Ventura County, it is my pleasure to accept this pride proclamation from the city of Thousand Oaks. For many LGBTQ+ residents, we celebrate pride 365 days a year. Our pride shows up in ways we live authentically and for the folks that aren't ready to be out just yet. We stand on the shoulders of generations of LGBTQ activists, past and present, and as we move towards creating a more inclusive world. At DCVC, our mission, like our city, the city of here of Thousand Oaks, is to provide advocacy, visibility, safety, and wellness for the LGBTQ+ community. I'll hand it over to my counterpart here to invite you all out to hang with us this pride.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Adam and council members for giving us the opportunity. Okay, Al, for giving us the opportunity to be here today. One little fun fact, so I moved out here in Ventura County 22 years ago. Now, I'm only of one digit. So I live in Westlake Village, which is on the border of Thousand Oaks. My ZIP code is 91361. Your ZIP code is 91362. And I like to consider myself as part of Thousand Oaks as I support our local establishments, especially nowadays, right? So in any event, thank you very much, Ty. I serve as, did I say my name? Because I tend to get a little nervous. But my name is Luis Andrade. I serve as Vice President for Diversity Collective Ventura County. And we are the premier, as Ty had mentioned, the LGBTQ+ Community Resource Center out in Ventura County, serving the Ventura County. And I want to invite you all to come up, to join us at an upcoming event, which is taking place Saturday, August 17. And that's in celebration of the pride individuals, residents, neighbors, family members, and friends, coworkers. And that's our Ventura County Pride Festival. Again, thank you very much, council members and Mayor Al, I can call you Al, for having us here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me present this proclamation to you. And Pride Month is being celebrated not just nationally, but internationally, all around the world. So happy to hear that. Would you like to have a picture taken with the council? I understand there's a few other people that would like to come down as well?
Oh, yes, of course.
We'd like to invite anyone who would like to take a photo with us in community, either as they identify or as allies. No pressure, just an open invitation.
Good things are happening in the city of Thousand Oaks. Now, for our last presentation, I'd like to invite Justin Link to the podium. He's president of the American Public Works Association. Justin is right behind me. Here we are. How are you? You're going to talk a little bit about our Transportation Project of the Year, correct?
Correct.
It's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Adam and members of the council. My name is Justin Link, City Traffic Engineer for the city of Simi Valley, Vice Chair of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission, President and President of the American Public Works Association Ventura County Chapter. I am here on behalf of APWA this meeting and pleased to be making my fourth appearance before this council. APWA is a nationwide organization comprised of over 32,000 professionals of various disciplines with the common goal of maintaining and improving infrastructure in communities across North America. Our chapter has over 300 members and is one of the most active of all 62 chapters. Each year, the chapter solicits nominations for completed or substantially complete public works projects of various disciplines that epitomize the efforts and ingenuity of public works professionals. This year, I am pleased to present the city of Thousand Oaks with an award in the transportation category for the Lawrence and Teller Road Intersection Improvements. This project, located in the city's busy industrial and biotech zones, provides various enhancements to serve all road users, including new sidewalks for improved pedestrian safety, realignment of the intersection to reduce conflicts between vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians, intersection signalization to facilitate pedestrian crossings and orderly vehicular movements, stormwater quality improvements, and drought-tolerant landscaping. This project would not have been successful without the leadership of the city council, city manager, or the expert engineering and construction management by the city's public works department, which is also an APWA-accredited department. It is my honor to congratulate the city on receiving this award.
Thanks, Justin. As you mentioned, this is not our first award.
Not your first one.
No. In fact, in front of 1710, I don't know if you're all familiar with that, we won an award for the sidewalk improvement that we did there a couple of years back. So the city's really at the forefront of different projects. A big credit to our public works department.
Absolutely.
How about a picture?
Absolutely.
Now, that was some very nice presentations. Alrighty. So let's see here. Yeah, public comments. If you'd call for the public comments, please.
This is the time and place for public comments. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Seven individuals have requested to speak. And pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
I've got to get my list to come up here, Laura.
Can you call? Would you mind calling the public?
Yeah, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, our first speaker is Alina Chalas.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alina Chalas, and I'm the Transit Analyst with the city of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here today. We're presenting the Summer Beach Bus Program. We're excited to debut our new freshly wrapped summer beach bus. And this year, our program will be running June 17 through August 10. And as you can see on the next slide, we have our schedules here. So we'll be running the beach bus Monday through Friday, two trips, two round trips daily to Zuma Beach. And we're excited to be extending service this year on Saturdays with two round trips to Ventura Harbor beaches. Round trip fares are $4 per person, $1 for seniors and ADA cardholders. And students, kindergarten through college, ride free. So we're excited to see everyone at the beach this summer. And if any residents would like to learn more information, they can go to tooks.co/beerchbus.
Thank you. Free is good. Next up, Sally Hibbits, please. And Kristy Warner is following Sally.
Good evening. My name is Sally Hibbits, and I'm a 50-year resident of the city of Thousand Oaks and the current, one of the current co-presidents of the American Association of University Women. Our organization strongly supports the pride declaration that was made here this evening by the city council and the mayor and the city government. We applaud all entities across our nation and around the world who support the dignity of all people. We especially applaud the city council. And thank you, Mayor Adam, specifically, for bringing this step forward this year and making it an agenda item unlike previous years when it should have been done. This year, it is out of the shadows where it should be, where we all stand with pride and recognition for all people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristy Warner, followed by Josh Gray. Kristy's got some K Kids with her, don't you? There you go.
Okay, Kristy Warner, and I'm from Thousand Oaks. And...
Good evening, Mayor Adam, council members, and viewing audience. Hi, my name is Tristan McFadden, and I'm the 5th grade co-president of Weathersfield K Kids, a student-led service leadership program sponsored by the Kiwanis Club of Thousand Oaks. Ms. Warner is our advisor. We are here to share with you our third book about kindness. It's called What's Your Superpower? Kindness is our superpower, and it can be yours, too. When we practice kindness, hopefully others will become motivated to do the same. It can be contagious. As kids, we get to experience the feeling of uplifting and supporting others. Imagine a world where every small act of kindness creates a ripple, which then becomes a huge wave of positivity and change.
All right, Tamara.
Hello, my name is Tamara Gazarian. I'm in 4th grade and the kindness coordinator, and my superpower is healing. Since healing is my superpower, when I hold someone's hand who's feeling bad, they will feel better in five minutes. You may wonder, what will I do if I get hurt or sick? I would just hold my hands together, and then in five minutes, I will feel better, too.
See, that's easy. Come on up. And number two. Go ahead, Charlotte.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Crocker, and I am 3rd grade Sergeant of Arms. If I had a superpower, I'd be queen of confidence. When I was younger, I had severe stage fright. Recently, Ms. Warner invited me to a Kiwanis meeting. I was speaking about K Kids and why I joined. There were so many people there, and I was so nervous. Ms. Warner told me to be calm, and I was so nervous. Ms. Warner told me to be, after, when it was my turn to speak, I started speaking, and I was amazing. After that, all I wanted to do was speak in front of large groups. That's why I should be queen of confidence.
Okay. All right, Playa.
Hello, I am in the 4th grade, and my name is Lea Israel. Actually, my name is Speedy Sloth. I know most sloths are slow, but not me. I can run at the speed of light. Everyone thinks I'm a regular sloth. When no one is watching, I help everyone I can who is struggling. Only people reading this know I have superpowers. They come in handy with lots of things. I can help people, and I'm never late to anything. Add to that, I'm never busy because I get my tasks done so quick. And that is how cool my superpower is.
Bradley.
Hi, my name is Bradley McFadden. I'm a second grade K kid. If I had a superpower, it would be to make the best meals. I would choose the superpower to make people happy. It would make the homeless people more happy than now. If I see anyone down, I would make them their favorite dish to help them feel better. If someone was sick, I would make them food to cheer them up. If someone felt like no one cared about them, I would make a whole meal for them and friends. This is why, if I had one superpower, it would be to choose the best cook.
Good job. All right, Shayna.
Hello, my name is Shayna Israel. I'm a second grade K kid. Actually, the name's Super Snap. My superpower is when I snap, everyone will be happy. I like to call it the snap of happiness. For example, if someone is sad, I just snap my fingers, and they are happy. The advantages for me are, if I'm having a bad day, I can just snap my fingers, and I'll be happy. The problem is it only lasts for an hour, and I have to wait for an hour to snap again. As you can see, my power is very helpful.
If I had one superpower, it would be to be the greatest artist. I would choose this superpower to make people feel emotion. I would make them laugh and feel good about themselves. If I saw someone feeling down, I would draw their favorite stuff to make them feel better. If someone was sick, I would draw them doing their favorite thing. If someone felt like no one cared about them, then I would draw them with a million friends. This is why, if I had one superpower, I would choose to be the greatest artist.
Come here, guys. Okay. Ready, go.
Let us be the heroes in our own stories and in the stories of others. Because when we are kind, we can truly change the world, one act at a time.
Take a bow. Take a bow. Take a bow. There we go. We're done. Can we have a picture too? Can we have a picture? Okay. Let's go. We get a picture.
Takes me back. My little girls were that age once. Anyway. Next up, Josh Gray. Hey, Josh.
Hey. Not too bad. Thank you, Mayor Adam and council members. You all love to put me after people who bring food and kids who just did absolutely incredible...
We have an animal out coming next, so good luck.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. Just wanted to share a few updates from your Chamber of Commerce. Last month, Leadership Keneho, the 21st class graduated in the Founder's Room. We'd like to thank TO Arts for helping make an excellent last session and inviting visiting artist David Gonzalez. Absolutely incredible session. And just want to let everybody know, applications for the next Leadership Keneho class are open and available on leadershipkeneho.org. Applications are due on August 16. Also, last month, we, the chamber had our recognition gala at Walnut Grove, and just like to say thank you again to all those who were able to attend and celebrate the honorees with us. This Friday at 8:00 a.m., we have the next Elevate Keneho Small Business Development Workshop, which will focus on AI and cybersecurity. The chamber's next legislative roundtable, excuse me, is on June 25 at 8:00 a.m. with the topic focused on workforce housing, with Housing Trust Fund Ventura County CEO and President Linda Bronschweiger. And then later on, the same day, the 25th of June at 12:00 p.m., the chamber will have its ADA compliance webinar. It'll be an excellent opportunity for local businesses to ask questions, ensure their own compliance, and protect themselves from potential lawsuits. Next month, on July 12, we'll be having our next Spotlight Breakfast on Tourism in the Keneho Valley. And on July 19, the chamber will be having our 40 Under 40 Honorary Reception. Register for all these events and more on the chamber website through our events calendar. Then a brief update on the tourism front. Last time I was here, I shared Q1 was slower than anticipated, and I'm happy to report that Q2 has so far exceeded expectations for our second quarter. Influencers that have visited since I last spoke have highlighted weddings for locations like Calamigos, Wolf Canyon Ranch, The Lodge, have highlighted Ronald Reagan Library Star Wars exhibit, as well as some great hikes and nature scenes throughout the Keneho Valley. The views on social media from these influencers have exceeded about 80,000 views just in the last month or so. Also quickly, the TID's Board of Directors voted last month to use funds to develop a new website by the end of the year and hire a new full-time role focused on business development for tourism in the region. Also wanted to note for all of you that the TID, saying this again, but the TID conducts an independent audit once every two years, and we'll be doing one this year for last year's financials, and the committee on that will meet this Friday. We appreciate this very important partnership to support our hotel partners and local businesses through increased tourism. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I am here. But thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Ashley Orozco.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is Ashley Orozco. I am a resident of Newbury Park, and I serve as a Commissioner on the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Council. I wanted to take a quick moment to say thank you for commemorating Pride Month this year during city council meeting with the Pride Proclamation. It is a joy and an honor as a community member and as a commissioner to be serving alongside a city council that stands as allies with our LGBTQ community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ashley. And Betty Stapelford. Betty Staple, oh, here she comes, sorry. Take your time.
Good evening. I'm, excuse me, I'm Reverend Dr. Betty Stapelford. I am also a member of AAUW, and so I'm here tonight to, as the Public Policy Chair, to say thank you to all of you for the Pride Proclamation in public, where not only people here can see it, but people on the TV screens, computer screens at home. And so I really appreciate that you have done that. My pronouns are she and her. I have no horse in this race, but I want to say that AAUW has values that support people of a wide variety of talents. We have a number of LGBTQ people in our community who have contributed endlessly and greatly to the prosperity of this community and to the opportunities that other people may have. So I'd like to thank you for that. I'd like to thank you for doing it in public. I'd also like to ask you a question. Why do we have to come back every year and ask you for these proclamations? It seems to me that maybe the thing to do is to declare Pride Month in June every year in perpetuity. So I'm just suggesting it would save you a lot of time. We wouldn't have to speak to you every year, write letters, and get you to approve making June Pride Month. So maybe something to think about for the future. And I also would like to say, maybe there's one other thing. You know, a lot has been talked about pride flags. Maybe down the road, I don't want to push you too hard all at once, but maybe displaying a pride flag would be a good thing to do. So just giving you a few things to think about, and thank you for what you have done because I think it is a big step and something we can all be proud of.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speakers. Mr. Powers, do you have any comment?
Just only that we have a very, we're very excited about the Beach Bus. If you saw the new wrap, our team worked really hard on the development of that, and we think that it will result in hopefully a nice uptick in ridership. And just a quick note on the proclamations process, just for the public's benefit, we do have a formal process for proclamations, commendations, and that's really to manage. We get those, we get requests frequently, and so have to have some stipulation process to manage it. It's pretty straightforward, but we, and diversity of collective was the applicant this year, just put forward that pretty straightforward process, and we're happy to process those within that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And on to the consent calendar. Do we have anything to pull? And I'm looking for a motion then, Mr. Engler?
Yes, I move the consent calendar.
All right. And there's a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
Mr. Newman, can I have your verbal vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And that motion passes 5 to 0, and I have an ordinance title to read. It's an ordinance approving development agreement with Cherry Tree Development LLC relating to development of property located at 500 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, APN 525-0-012-230 669-0-201-030, 669-0-201-040, 669-0-201-050, and 669-0-201-105, Thousand Oaks, California, Development Agreement, DAGR 20, excuse me, 2023-7001, and that is ordinance number 1731-NS.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire. All right, we have a committee report, and we have Mr. Clyde Dohany here from the Community Funding Review Committee. He's our chair. That is one hardworking committee.
However we're done. For the year.
Thank you.
I also have with me two of our committee members who are joining.
Oh, good. Feel free to introduce them if you like.
Introduce yourself.
Okay. Denise Monden, Vice Chairman of the Committee.
Hello.
Kate Marley, Committee Member.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and council members. It's my pleasure to be here again to present the Community Funding Review Committee's recommendations. This time for the city's fiscal year 2024-25 Community Social Services Grant, or the CSSG. The city's Community Social Services Grant Program funding is included in the proposed budget for 2024 and 25. That grant provides $100,000 of annual funding for social services agencies. In order to qualify, applicants must be 501(c)(3) organizations for nonprofit, located in or primarily serving the City of Thousand Oaks and the community. Qualifying programs must provide a benefit to the community they serve and a wide cross-section of the Thousand Oaks citizens. After some of our preceding people, I wanted to say that the council has shown its superpower for kindness, and on December 5, the council approved a one-time increase of $75,000 and a one-time reallocation of $25,000 for the 2024-25 Community Services Grant. This, in addition to the existing $100,000, increased the total grant funding to $200,000 for fiscal year '24 and '25. Increasing the total grant budget allowed for additional organizations to provide essential services for the community, thus doubling our previous five years, each of our previous five years' funding. Staff understands, and the council understands, that the growing demands of the community and remaining committed to addressing these needs. Staff will come back to city council in the fall to discuss future adjustments to the community funding grants. The application period was from March 11 to April 11 of 2024. The application was available on the city's website. Email notifications were sent to applicants from the previous grant cycles, a press release was published, and the city utilized social media to notify the community of the grant opportunity. City staff held an application workshop on September 21, 2023 via Zoom for all nonprofit organizations interested in applying for the grant. The workshop was recorded and remains available on the dedicated Grant Opportunities website on the city's website. The city received 25 applications with grant requests totaling $238,000. CFRC members independently evaluated the applications using predetermined scoring criteria based on the requirements for the grant applications. On May 8, the CFRC met to discuss the collated scores of the applications and unanimously confirmed the recommendation to the city council. The CFRC is recommending grant funding in the amount of $199,500 for the programs. On this slide, these are the 23 programs that are recommended for funding. The representative programs meet the criteria of providing public and social services benefiting the community and a wide cross-section of the community. CFRC recommends the city council award the fiscal year '24-25 Community Social Services Grant as presented by the committee with the total award of $199,500. That concludes my representation.
Thank you, Mr. Dohany. Yeah, any questions for Mr. Dohany or staff? Mr. Engler?
Thank you, just, yeah, thank you for all that hard work. I know that going through all these applications is a, both a pleasure but also a chore, so thank you for doing that. All of these organizations are very worthy of our support. There's two that did not receive, can you go into the reasons why two of them did not receive the allocations that they asked for?
The principal reason for those, the two that did not, were not solely for the City of Thousand Oaks, or mostly for the City of Thousand Oaks. One was for Santa Barbara, and one was, if I recall, the second one was the Central Coast, Girl Scouts of the Central Coast. Sometimes, when there are such organizations that extend beyond our boundaries, the organizations are able, in their application, to fence off the amount of money that we would allow them, and they'd be used strictly for citizens of Thousand Oaks. And there is sometimes confusion between Thousand Oaks Westlake and Westlake Village, and we get into that on rare occasion.
Thank you. So if they had been able to carve out the amount of money and dedicate it strictly to our community, they would have been okay?
Well, I can't say that.
Yeah.
But that is a basic criterion for these awards, would be to be, not always, not all, to our community, but mostly to our community. Some of the organizations include Ventura as Camarillo, but they, once again, they then say these things will be set aside for the citizens of Thousand Oaks. How they do that, it's a challenge, I'm sure.
And maybe if I'll add to that, the, we do host a grant workshop, or workshop, for potential applicants, and it's one of those things that we talk about during that, and as the council, I'm sure, can appreciate, there's a lot of groups that do great work, but these are City of Thousand Oaks discretionary tax dollars, and so ensuring that there is a high level of confidence that that money is being spent to benefit this community is the focus. So it depends on what they're doing and how they're doing it, but we, you know, do go to the extra mile to ensure that that's happening.
No, thank you for that as well. I asked that question mainly because the, there's always... No, thank you for that as well. I asked that question mainly because the, there's always a disappointment when one doesn't get a grant. Just want to make sure that everybody knows how that came about. So thank you.
It is. It's a difficult one to do, as I'm sure you can imagine. When we get the applications and everything that we get is worthy, but we don't have that much money. The fact that the council has given us double what we've had in the past, I wouldn't say made it easy, but it's certainly easier to deal with. Did you want to add anything?
I did. I would just want to add, one of the applications was incomplete when we received it. So it wasn't eligible. So that sort of lowers the pain a little bit. But it wasn't because we had to deny, they just didn't complete it. And then I think staff had a conversation with them for the future on completed.
Any other questions? All right. Well, I'll just thank you and the committee for your work. 38 years, we've been passing out these grants to social service agencies that deal with low-income folks. Of the 23 grants, I noticed 17 received their full ask. That's 70%. That's a pretty, pretty good track record. And just so the public knows, this money goes for clothing, for medical uses, for food, for shelter, some real essentials that people need. So it's an important program, and I really thank you for working it and making sure everybody gets what they need.
And I'd like to add, in addition to the doubling of funding from the council, our staff did a great job of amassing the applications, reviewing the applications, and then 23 different applications presented to our committee. It was, they did a tremendous amount of work. Thank you to them and to the council.
Very good. Do I have a motion? Mr. Newman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. With gratitude, I'd like to move item 13A as recommended.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. If you'd vote, please.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can sit and fine.
And next up, we have a public hearing. If you would announce that, Ms. McGuire?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item Number 10A, the Landscape and Lighting Assessment District Number 79-2, the annual levy. And currently, there are no speakers.
All right, thank you. And we have presenting tonight our Senior Financial Analyst, Miguel Chavez. Hello, Mr. Chavez.
Good evening, Mayor Adam and Council Members. Tonight, we are holding the annual hearing and levy of the city's lighting and landscape district. Alongside me tonight is City Engineer Nada Hadari, Budget Officer Ryan Roman, as well as Charmaine McCarville, our consultant from Webb Municipal Finance, who is joining us via Zoom for any questions where she can assist. The city's Landscape and Lighting District provides funding for ongoing maintenance and utility costs for landscaping and lighting throughout Thousand Oaks. The city's landscaping district is apportioned into 39 zones in the city. And the lighting district is divided into six zones. The extent of landscaping zones are shown in this graphic in blue. Through an agreement with Ventura County Auditor Controller, approved at the May 7th council meeting, the costs for lighting and landscape zones are assessed upon properties via the property tax roll as described in the final engineer's report included in your packet. Listed in this slide are some of the primary landscape benefits residents receive from the assessments collected in the landscape district. In addition to the physical benefits listed here, supplemental benefits to properties include improved aesthetic appeal in our neighborhoods, erosion resistance, dust and debris control, improved traffic circulation and driver awareness, and reduced noise and air pollution. And here are some of the lighting benefits residents receive from the assessments. Additional benefits include enhanced deterrence of crime and the aid to police protection, increased nighttime safety on roads and highways, improved ingress and egress at driveways and intersections, and increased visibility of businesses during nighttime hours. One theme on both slides for landscaping and lighting is increased driver awareness and resident safety. In accordance with the district formation documents and the final engineer's report, assessment rates for all zones in the landscape district will be adjusted this year by the allowable inflationary adjustment of 3%. The annual adjustment for all lighting zones will also be 3%. There are no annexations for fiscal year '24-25. Average landscape assessment rates are proposed to increase by $10.54. Note the maximum rates generally apply to regions of the city with many landscaped medians, parkways, street trees, and weed abatement. Lighting assessments are proposed to be adjusted by the allowable inflationary rate of 3%, an adjustment of 56 cents from last fiscal year. The landscape and lighting district continues to face challenges with escalating utility rates, contract maintenance costs, and contract maintenance costs. Public Works is beginning to allocate funding towards landscape rehabilitation projects focused upon reducing water consumption as well as using smart irrigation controllers. In addition, lighting district revenues continue to lag behind expenses. The recommendations before you this evening are listed in the staff report. And with that, staff are available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Questions? Mr. Engler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that work. It's, I think we all can agree that our streets and lighting are some of the best in the area. And it's due to the hard work you guys are putting in. The question I have, we're basically doing a COLA increase on both districts. Is that COLA adequate to keep up with actual inflation? In other words, I know the inflation in the trades and in construction is higher than the general inflation rate. My reason for asking that, as I don't want three years from now to have to do a catch-up because we've fallen behind. So the 3% will adequately keep us in range of where we need to be?
Well, I'll defer to Nader in terms of construction costs.
Yeah, thank you, Miguel. Yeah, that's, it is a good question. Based on this being an assessment, a property tax assessment, there are limitations of how much we can increase it. So you are right, the construction costs have gone up and are going up greater than this 3%, greater than the CPI over the past few years. So no, this is not going to allow us to keep up. And as a result, there are several zones that are requiring subsidy, for lack of a better word, in order to continue to be able to operate. The goal is to produce those as, to the greatest extent we can. But there, that does still exist in some of the zones that aren't collecting enough revenue to cover the costs.
Okay. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Chavez, for your report. I too want to echo Council Member Engler's sentiments. Whenever we have visitors from out of town, multiple times, we've had people comment on how nicely landscaped our medians are, and that's a credit to Public Works. So thank you for that. One of your points in your presentation noted that expenses, as you've just covered, have exceeded revenues much more than expected. And my question is, is it strictly a function of costs being higher? Or are revenues actually below what was targeted? Or is it some combination of the two?
With the lighting district, since we're basically capped at either the higher of CPI, which was 2.53% for this report, or 3%, and the base being so low at about $19, it's difficult to be able to keep up with higher construction costs.
Right. Okay. So it's not so much a question of revenues underperforming. They are, they are what you expected them to be, correct? It's just that expenses have gone up so much.
Correct.
Yeah, and that would include utility costs, electrical costs, you know, which are a big driver, for instance, for the lighting district.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
Mr., no? Okay. All right. I don't believe we have any public speakers, do we? No. Any more from staff? We're all good? All right. Then if you close the hearing, Ms. McGuire?
The hearing is closed.
All right. That was easy. Let us go on to a discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Engler?
I would move the staff recommendation on this. I have that little bit of concern in the back of my mind, we're not keeping up. But I think the staff has indicated that that's the maximum we can go.
Okay. Very good. Comments? I would just say that, I mean, these assessments are absolutely essential. Like my two fellow council members said, first impressions are lasting. When people come into the city, they see a beautiful city. And that's a compliment to the people that pay these assessments. Plus, there's a quality of life situation for our long-term residents. That's also an essential factor. So it really, it really pays to make these payments and keep these streets and landscaping and sidewalk, you know, in A1 condition. So. Do I have a motion? Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Engler has a motion.
Oh, you motioned, didn't you, Bob? There you go. Well, can't we have two?
No, you can't.
No, one is enough. One's enough. All right, we do have a motion on the floor. Vote, please.
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
And Mr. Powers?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to compliment Miguel. This is his first presentation in front of our City Council. Fantastic job, first of many, I'm sure. So thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure.
I wanted to say that, but I didn't know if it was appropriate. But good job.
Nice job, Mr. Chavez. All righty. Wow. We just went right through this agenda, didn't we? And Mr. Powers, do you have any other thoughts you'd care to share?
Just that we'll be back two weeks from tonight on the 18th of June. We have our Council on Aging Annual Report. We've got a couple other items that are potential at the moment. But we know we're also going to have a TOO Arts Operations and Programming update. And that is on the 18th of June.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to June 18th.